Half a day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is now back from recess. The time now is 3:09 PM. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today, Senator Clinton Rigel and Senator Telo Taitigui. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Resolution Number 464-36, sponsored by Senator Clinton E. Rigel. It's relative to requesting that the Honorable Deb Howland, Secretary of Interior, honor the Department of Interior's responsibilities to Guam by directing the Offices of Insular Affairs and the Environmental Policy and Compliance to review and assess the potential environmental impacts of the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blas Live Fire Training Range Complex at Northwest Field and the Hand Grenade Range at Anderson South on the northern Guam lens aquifer and provide guidance to the Department of the Navy prior to range operations that ensures the protection of Guam's water resources. And calling on the Committees on Armed Services of the U.S. Senate and the House of Representatives to pause construction activities related to the training ranges and withhold all current and future funding of the same until environmental impacts concerning the impending threat of contamination of the northern Guam lens aquifer and future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam are reassessed. The Committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Wednesday, November 23rd, 2022, and please address testimony to Senators Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off of the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. The rules of conduct for today's public hearing are as follows. Those called to testify will be in order beginning with those that called in advance with my office on Monday, November 14th, followed by the order according to the sign-in sheet. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the Chair before speaking and begin by stating your name, organization, and position if relevant for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given an opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character of the person testifying is not allowed. And now to begin our agenda. Resolution Number 464-36 LS, sponsored by Senator Clinton E. Rigel, relative to requesting that the Honorable Deb Howland, Secretary of the Interior, honor the Department of Interior's responsibility to Guam by directing the Offices of Insular Affairs and Environmental Policy and Compliance to review and assess the potential environmental impact of the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blas Live Fire Training Range Complex at Northwest Field and the Hand Grenade Range at Anderson South on the northern Guam lens aquifer and provide guidance to the Department of Navy prior to range operations that ensures the protection of Guam's water resources. And calling on the Committees on Armed Services of the U.S. Senate and House of Representatives to pause construction activities related to training ranges and withhold all current and future funding of the same until environmental impacts concerning the impending threat of contamination of the northern Guam lens aquifer and future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam are reassessed. I would like to now welcome the sponsor of Resolution 464-36 for opening remarks. Senator Rigel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For my opening remarks, I'm just going to read the full resolution itself into the record because I think the resolution actually speaks for itself. "Be it resolved by Menetren Tai Seisne Les Saturan Guahan, whereas in August 2015, the U.S. Department of the Navy issued its Record of Decision Based on the Guam and CNMI Military Relocation Final Supplemental Environmental Impact Study 2012 Roadmap Adjustments (SEIS) pursuant to which the U.S. Department of Defense proposed to relocate approximately 8,600 U.S. Marines from Okinawa to Guam, and as a part of that action, to construct and operate a series of live-fire training ranges in Guam and in the CNMI. The massive Live Fire Training Range Complex and Hand Grenade Range are currently under construction and sit on top of the northern Guam lens aquifer, a critical resource that provides Guam residents with 85% of the island's fresh drinking water. And whereas the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blas Live Fire Training Range Complex is located at Northwest Field Anderson Air Force Base and consists of five separate firing ranges, including a known-distance rifle range, pistol range, modified record-of-fire range, non-standard small arms range, multipurpose machine gun range, and a standalone hand grenade range is located at Anderson South. Approximately 187 acres of pristine limestone forests have been cleared in support of the Live Fire Training Range Complex. Construction of the KD Rifle Range project is anticipated to be completed in 2022 and operational sometime between 2023 and 2024. And construction of the multipurpose machine gun range is ongoing with expected completion in 2024. And whereas, according to the SEIS, up to 6.7 million lead bullets will be fired and 421 hand grenades will be thrown over the aquifer each year, potentially threatening the community's primary water source as well as surrounding ocean areas. And whereas the SEIS provides that range operations have the potential to leach munition constituents into groundwater such as lead, antimony, copper, and zinc, munitions constituents are any materials originating from unexploded ordnance, discarded military munitions, or other military munitions, including explosive and non-explosive materials, and emission, degradation, or breakdown elements of such ordnance or munitions." That's 10 U.S.C. Section 27, 10E3. The SEIS further discloses that munitions constituents specific to the explosives used at the Hand Grenade Range include, and forgive me if I don't pronounce all of these chemicals properly, but include trinitrotulene, cyclo-tetramethylene, tetra-nitramine, high-melting explosives or HMX, hexahydrotrinitrotriazine, royal demolition explosive, and perchlorate. And whereas, in addition to harmful munitions constituents, the SEIS states that the firing ranges would potentially increase the amount of petroleum, oil, and lubricants hazardous waste, herbicides, pesticides, and fertilizers being stored, transported, and utilized on the proposed facilities. And whereas Illes Satura finds it concerning that the SEIS lacks a thorough discussion of range munitions constituents and emits available data regarding the potential for these chemical agents to remain in soils and leach into groundwater. In January of 2012, the United States Environmental Protection Agency published the EPA Federal Facilities Forum Issue Paper Site Characterization for Munitions Constituents, which compiles studies of military installations in the U.S. and Canada and identifies a wide range of chemical agents left on surface soils surrounding firing ranges. The EPA 2012 paper cites data showing the chemical components of explosives and propellants tend to be mobilized by heavy rainfall and may threaten groundwater supplies. This is of particular concern in Guam as the karst limestone topography of the northern Guam lens aquifer is especially porous, rendering the aquifer vulnerable to contamination. And whereas Illes Satura finds that the significance of the NGLA as Guam's sole source aquifer, the increased annual withdrawal of groundwater amounting to 1.7 million gallons each day as a result of the Guam and CNMI military relocation, and threats induced by climate change are critical factors that must be considered to determine the true and long-term impacts of the training ranges on Guam's water resources. And whereas Illes Satura recognizes our obligation to protect and preserve the natural and cultural heritage of the Chamorro people, that this island and its resources are an inheritance from our ancestors for our present and future generations and must be safeguarded, and whereas island nations all across the Pacific region are rising to fulfill that obligation and ensure community resilience and survival through climate change, our island community joins our voices with our region and with those who have dedicated their life to protecting this inheritance, our lands and waters. And whereas there is insufficient scientific data available to Guam residents to fully assess potential irreversible impacts of the construction and operation of the firing ranges on the northern Guam lens aquifer, and it is critical that the community has given reasonable time to review relevant and sound information before the ranges become operational. Now therefore be it resolved that Imenaitren Tai Seisne Les Saturan Guahan does hereby, on behalf of the people of Guam, call on Secretary of the Interior Deb Howland to honor the Department of the Interior's responsibilities to Guam and its residents by directing the Offices of Insular Affairs and Environmental Policy and Compliance to review and assess the potential environmental impacts of the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blas Live Fire Training Range Complex at Northwest Field and the Hand Grenade Range at Anderson South on the northern Guam lens aquifer and provide guidance to the Department of the Navy prior to range operations that ensures the protection of Guam's water resources. And be it further resolved that Imenaitren Tai Seisne Les Saturan Guahan does hereby, on behalf of the people of Guam, call on the U.S. Senate Committee on Armed Services and the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Armed Services to pause construction activities related to the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blas Live Fire Training Range Complex at Northwest Field Anderson Air Force Base and the Hand Grenade Range at Anderson South and withhold all current and future funding of the ranges or any associated federal action until environmental impacts concerning the impending threat of contamination of the northern Guam lens aquifer and future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam are reassessed. And be it further resolved that the Speaker certify and the Legislative Secretary attest to the adoption hereof, and that copies of the same be thereafter transmitted to the Honorable Joseph R. Biden Jr., President of the United States of America, the Honorable Kamala Harris, Vice President of the United States of America, to the Honorable Deb Howland, Secretary of the U.S. Department of Interior, to the Honorable Keone Nakoa, Deputy Assistant Secretary for Insular Affairs, U.S. Department of Interior, to Stephen G. Tryon, Director of Office of Environmental Policy and Compliance, U.S. Department of the Interior, to the Honorable Jack Reed, Chairperson, Committee on Armed Services, U.S. Senate, to the Honorable Adam Smith, Chairperson, Committee on Armed Services, U.S. House of Representatives, and to the Honorable Lourdes A. Leon Guerrero, Imaga Hagan Guahan. So again, I just wanted to read the proposed resolution into the record and also so that everyone knows exactly what we're discussing and what this resolution is proposing. And for the listening public, who may, just to ensure that there's no confusion, this is not something that the legislature has resolved yet. This is a proposed resolution that if we get the support of a majority of the senators, we can pass this resolution and, in essence, make a statement to the federal government in summary, asking that they ensure that our water is safe and clean for all of us and for our future generations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. The Committee has received written testimony from the following all in support of Resolution 464-36. Amber Beneventi, Alexandra Garrido, Elizabeth Lim, Kiera Kichitsu, Siobhan McManus, Hannah Rabadula, Cameron Luhon, Mariana Gabriel, Nolan Flores, Shannon McManus, Cheska Kabuhat, Janice Hernandez, Tassi Scambolari, and Caitlin McManus. So at this time, also, the Speaker sends her regrets that she cannot attend today due to a family funeral. All right, so now I'd like to open the floor to those that have come here to testify, beginning with Monika Flores.
Half a day. There it is. Half a day. Senators, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Monika Flores. I am one of the core members of P'Teheh La Texan Save Rotidian, and I'm here today to share our support for this resolution, Resolution 464-36. And you're going to hear from a lot of folks today, you know, describing a lot of the harms, the potential harms that this live-fire training range complex over the aquifer will cause. And I actually prepared a few slides because it's really important for us to think about this destruction and harm against the legacy of environmental racism and contamination that our people are forced to deal with. We're not talking about a one-time exposure to toxic chemicals. We're talking about a lifetime of exposure from the time we're probably conceived in the wombs of our parents and throughout our lives, from the water that they drink and the food we eat. We are constantly contaminated and we're constantly dealing with exposure to military contamination at several sites around our island. And so it's so important to look at the construction of the Live Fire Training Range Complex and the risks involved and measure against the long legacy of environmental racism and violence and the long legacy of environmental injustice that we are made to face. And so if I could ask for my slides to go up? Thank you. And that's just our cover. Can I get the next slide, please? So P'Teheh La Texan Save Rotidian actually started a petition to try to stop the construction of the Live Fire Training Range Complex five years ago, and today we have over 25,000 signatures on that petition. We've also tried to, you know, address the violations of indigenous rights and the severe environmental justice issues with the United Nations. We were represented by Attorney Julian Ogun in that effort. And what that resulted in was the very first communication from the United Nations to the United States government acknowledging these violations of our indigenous rights, of our human rights, and the great risks, the tremendous risks that the enduring U.S. colonization militarization is doing to our island. Can I have the next slide, please? And so again, as I said, we have to measure it against this long legacy of environmental racism and violence. We have over 100 military toxic waste sites, 19 superfund sites. We're talking about multiple generations now suffering with cancers and several other illnesses resulting from nuclear radiation, Agent Orange PCBs, and other contaminants. Just, you know, a few years ago, there was a leak, a jet fuel leak, a military jet fuel leak, and 500 tons of contaminated soil, 500 tons, was destroyed. That is enough to impact several generations. And of course, we always find unexploded ordnance. May I have the next slide, please? This is actually an image from the SEIS, and it shows the ranges right over La Texan or Rotidian. And you can see, all those different colors show corals and algies that fall within the surface danger zone. I know a lot of you have already seen this. Those dots represent turtle sightings. And the range extends, rather, the surface danger zone extends 2.8 miles out over the ocean. So that shows in just how great this risk is, not just to the aquifer, but also to all the coastal resources in the area, because there is a reef-to-ridge risk here. All right, may I have the next slide, please? Again, these are the ranges, and all of those dots represent several endangered species. A lot of those are medicinal plants, the eight-spot butterfly, finihi. And there is one small red dot, which is the Hodzon Lagu tree. Now, just a couple months ago, P'Teheh La Texan, along with the Center for Biological Diversity, was able to go and visit the Hodzon Lagu tree, and I want to report that it's not doing okay. It's actually in really bad shape, and it's because the drastic clearing for the construction of the Live Fire Training Range Complex has placed extreme stress on the tree. And the buffer zone is very small. It's really the size of two street lamps if you're walking from the totally cleared area into the small amount of jungle where the tree is. It's about the size of, it's really the distance of walking from two street lights down a street. It's not very far at all. May I have the next slide, please? This map was created by Dr. Mike Carson, and it shows where the surface danger zone extends over several important archaeological sites or sites with our ancestral burials and evidence of our ancestors' sacred lives. So there are so many other impacts as well, you know, the concerns about our aquifer. Next slide, please. I wanted to show this because this is the northern end of Guam, and on the left you see where the Live Fire Training Range Complex is on Northwest Field and how far the surface danger zone goes out over into the ocean. And to the right, right before you get to the edge where Pati Point is, that's also going to be the site for open burn and open detonation, which also presents a serious threat to our northern lens aquifer. So we're looking at two ends of the northern, the northern side of our island where all of this horrible contamination is taking place. We're basically turning the northern end of our island, or they are turning the northern land of our island into a sacrifice zone. And you'll hear scientists say that, you know, the firing range is placed on the shallow end of our aquifer, but the thing is, and also the OBD range, but the thing is, is in high tide, the contaminants that go out to the coast come back into the aquifer. All right, next slide, please. I just want to show you the proximity here. You can see again, the firing range complex is right on the top left on this map at Northwest Field, and the EOD range just not very far away. So two huge harms at this, right over our aquifer. And again, measuring it against this long legacy of environmental racism and violence. I think that's, oh, and the last slide, please. And again, you know, La Texan is one of our oldest and most sacred villages. It's one of the only places that our folks can still go and commune with our ancestors that's not locked inside a military fence. It's completely unacceptable that 6.7 million ammunition a year will be fired over this sacred area and that this area will also be closed to the community for 273 days, nights, and weekends. That also means that for 273 days, our fisher folks are going to have to go around the surface danger zone. This puts them in harm's way. It makes it unsustainable for them to continue fishing that area, which is one of the richest fishing areas historically and currently. It's actually called the, like, the Wahoo Highway or something. It's where everybody fishes, and it's actually where the world record marlin was caught, you know, many years ago. And so there's so much at stake here, and so we support this resolution, and we thank you all for introducing it. We feel that, you know, it's our hope that Secretary Howland can do something to stop this. And a couple months ago, P'Teheh La Texan tried to attend the Programmatic Agreement Workshop at the Guam Museum. We actually sent several emails requesting to formally attend, which went unanswered. And so we showed up at the Guam Museum and basically stood in the door until somebody let us in, you know? And finally, we were let in, and we were able to go on a tour to the Live Fire Training Range Complex. And for years, we've been saying four out of the five ranges have already been completed, and we had hope in the fact that the last range hadn't been cleared and constructed yet. And what we saw was deeply heartbreaking, and it was very difficult to bear witness to. And so I want to show you the destruction at that fifth range. We were able to take some video, and, you know, this is, some of this is basic science, right? Some of us are familiar with that science fair project that students do where they have these three containers, one with just soil, one with soil with some grass, and one with soil with a lot of grass, and then they'll pour water into it, and you can see the clarity of the water underneath these containers. So as you can imagine, with this drastic clearing, what we're doing is removing any way for the natural environment to repair itself from the harm of the firing range. In removing all these trees, we're removing our, you know, the land's way of cleaning out these toxins. And so I wanted to share this video and put it on public record and share it with the viewing audience. And so I'd like to ask now that that video is played.
We are now entering the multipurpose machine gun range. So you'll see on your left-hand side, see some of our composting process over there. The compost is covered with Tekinet, which prevents coconut green osers beetle from breeding in those piles. So they're preparing either the compost or having them begin to self-heat for that decomposition process. On the right-hand side, you'll see some islands of vegetation left over with marking. There's some cyclats that are still pending translocation. So you'll see that throughout the range, but I would say predominantly the footprint of the range has been cleared of jungle and other vegetation. If you have any questions of what you're seeing, just let us know.
Yeah, I'd also like to bring up, there was an article that came up regarding the fire out here. The mulcher that did catch on fire was back where you saw that mulch. So it was nowhere near the center of this tree that we were talking about, just so everyone's aware. And then same thing with what Al said earlier, all those different green island areas is where we have a cyclat that we're going to translocate or some other species.
So one other benefit of the earth moving that's currently occurring here is they're balancing out the site so they don't have to exert additional demand on the local quarries. So they're actually trying to reuse most of the material that's currently on site to level out the firing range. So that's another secondary benefit where we are trying to maximize reuse of the materials that are actually here for the construction of the ring. There are high-value trees that were salvaged within the footprint of the range. I don't think we can see any of them now, but they were provided to the public. It's available for pickup at the Guam Raceway. Actually, Melvin's folks at Kaha are our primary PLCs for the distribution, but we stage all the, what we call, cultural timber at the Guam Raceway for the benefit of local artisans who may have use of the ephid or the dok-dok, the types of trees that are used in local woodworking.
That was the other side of the firing.
Earth ovens.
So just here?
Yes. Also, we found a recovery and integration for the ship. We already.
Were these dry sites taken last week for this last ring?
Didn't we have a pre-survey, though?
Yeah, we did the pre-survey as agreed upon with the shipload. We found those sites. So even before, even before construction, we already had an agreement with the shipload to do data recovery for those pottery scatters and earth ovens that we found prior to construction.
That was actually the second survey, previous survey.
There was also one area of fraternium in remains that was also recovered for our standard operating. I think we mentioned that in our slides. I think we mentioned that in our slides.
Okay, I just want to thank you for sitting through that video. We just felt it was quite a compelling depiction of the devastating clearing that we saw for the machine gun range, the fifth out of the four ranges. It's a scarring. It's a scarring of our land, it's a scarring of our living ancestor, and it, it will harm the aquifer, our, our living ancestor. You know, for five years, Patah Lataxen's been doing this work, but there have been people doing this work a lot longer than us. We come from, you know, we're just, we've only been around five years, but I look around the room, and there are people who've been doing this for as long as I've been alive and longer, and of course, all the families who've been fighting for five generations now. But then also, I think of all the young people who come to all the protests and stand outside with us for hours in the rain or the sun. We're getting more and more young people coming out. This is an urgent issue. And so, um, we're grateful that this resolution has been introduced, and we encourage the entire body to adopt it. It's urgent. Um, you're going to hear a lot about the hazardous materials of the live fire training range complex, and I, it's important to mention that these are forever, many of these are forever chemicals. They do not break down in the natural environment. In fact, they just build up over time, and because of that, it's easy for them to move into the groundwater, move into the soil. And, and when you think about things being fired in the air, these propellants, they, they, they travel in the air, they travel in the wind, and they settle in other parts to, to enter the aquifer in, in other locations. Um, we're talking about RDX, as the senator mentioned earlier, TNT, perchlorate, ethylene oxide, lead, and also PFOS and PFAS. And as these chemicals build up in concentration over time, um, we're talking about permanent damage that's going to be impossible to clean up. It's, you know, if you look at sites where they're trying to clean up ranges, O B O D ranges or firing ranges, we're looking at the government spending billions of dollars with no possible end to that cleanup in sight. This is permanent destruction. This is basically like wiping us off the face of the earth. And just to talk about some of the, the impacts of those chemicals, liver and lung cancer, nervous system reproductive system, urinary tract system, um, issues, prostate and kidney damage, headaches, convulsions, seizures. We're talking about, you know, developmental issues in children. We're talking about stomach cancer, breast cancer, leukemia. It, it's, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't add up. If this firing range is for national security, we need to think about the bigger picture of genuine security and what that means. Genuine security for our people means that we can live in our homelands without harm, without harm to our water. And so, um, we support this resolution, and again, we encourage the entire body to vote in favor of it immediately. Thank you so much. Sisus Maasi.
Senator Maasi, Moneka, for your advocacy and your testimony, and thank you to everyone who's here. So now I'd like to call on Joni Kerr for her testimony.
Hafadee Senators Clint Regal, Senator Sabina, Senator Tallo. I'm Joni Kinga Kerr. I am a board member of Patah Lataxen Save Retidian and also a founding member of the organization. I'm a faculty advisor for the Guam Community College Eagle Warriors, and I have teaching experience in marine and environmental biology, chemistry, anatomy physiology, and I'm a certified trainer for hazardous waste operations and emergency response, or HAZ-WAPER. I thank Senator Clint Regal for sponsoring this resolution and for Senator Sabina and her office for inviting our group to testify. And I recognize you senators for your commitment to protecting Guam's resources and environment. So Resolution 464-36 essentially calls the attention, calls for the attention of the Secretary of the Interior, Deborah Howland, to use the power of her office and agencies to, to stop the building and funding of the live fire training range and other military training facilities in order to assess the potential of these projects to contaminate our sole source, sole source aquifer. So this is a huge request, but underlying it is the future health and well-being of our island and people. We are not blind to the failures, the hundreds of failures of the U.S. military with regard to firing ranges, training methods, and operations that nationally and worldwide have damaged environments and resources and sicken local residents and wildlife. And it's no different here on Guam, because since the end of World War II, our island's soil and water resources have been contaminated by solvents, heavy metals, munitions, and careless disposal of military waste associated with running the Navy and Air Force bases. Anderson Air Force Base has superfund sites in various stages of cleanup. Water wells are now monitored on the base and in the Marbo area to keep track of toxic solvent plumes. Groundwater at Marbo is contaminated with trichloroethylene, which is a degreasing solvent. The Air Force and U.S. EPA have agreed to a waiver of talks of technical impracticability. So basically, what that means is that there is no practical way to implement a cleanup or remedy of that situation, because if they start sucking up on the solvent, it's going to pull up on the salt, underlying saltwater layer and just spread everything everywhere. So they've decided that's an impossible, it's just not possible to clean up. It's there forever. Further, hundreds of acres of pristine limestone forests, as, as Moneka pointed out, has been cleared for the live fire training range. There's, it's gone forever. This is especially heartbreaking for the original landowners and their families. They remember how beautiful their land once was and how they lived and thrived on it. And the only legacy to pass to their children are memories. So now it's all barren and useless, as you saw in the video, and now the land's only purpose is to practice for war. So with the operation of this firing range, the amount of lead fired from 6.7 million bullets, hundreds of thousands of gallons of solvents used to clean tens of thousands of weapons, because, you know, they have to clean the weapons, and that's, that's actually where a lot of this solvent contamination comes from. You have heavy metals and chemicals associated with exploding hundreds of thousands of hand grenades, so that's going to be huge. And frankly, it escapes me how the military is going to be able to keep ahead of the contamination, as there are no plan in place. And, you know, if these activities were proposed for areas like Martha's Vineyard or Greenwich, Connecticut, there'd be an uproar. Well, we've been roaring for years and with no effect. So I don't know if these next words are ever going to reach the ears of the Secretary of the Interior, but I did some, a little research on the secretary. And it seems that the Secretary Howland, you come from a military family, your mother is a Navy veteran, and your father was a 30-year combat Marine who earned a Silver Star for saving six lives in Vietnam. So their service to the nation is something to be proud of, but I mean, no disrespect in bringing them up. Rather, I interpret it as a matter of personal responsibility for you and your agency to take the initiative to ensure that the military is held to a high standard to avoid continuing its toxic legacy on Guam. Further, you have a history of seeking environmental justice, and under your leadership, the Department of the Interior has an agenda rooted in environmental justice. So I'm going to quote from the Interior website. "Communities of color, rural and indigenous communities, low-income, low-income families, and people in the U.S. territories have long suffered disproportionate and cumulative harm from the climate crisis, from air and water pollution, to the legacy pollution of toxic sites. As we acknowledge that reality, we have made environmental justice a central part of our mission." So Guam has been called the tip of the spear for national defense, but we are more than just a position of defense for the U.S. We are indigenous people who have lived here as long as 3,500 years and longer and survived the past 500 years as a colony. We are people who came from all over the world, fell in love with this island, and decided to stay and raise families. We are upwards of 165,000 residents who live in 212 square miles, and a third of which is owned by a milit, by the military. Secretary Howland, please make your words on the DOI website ring true and hold the military responsible for ensuring that we do not become another Red Hill, Vieques, Fort Ord, or Camp Lejeune. Sisus, then Senator Maasi. Thank you.
Senator Maasi, Joni, for that heartfelt testimony. So now I'd like to call on Angela Santos for her testimony.
Ben is in Hafadee, Paratoro Hamzu, Nui Man Gai Gi Guini. Guam's Angela Santos. I come to support, and I come to show support for Resolution 464-36 LS and its request to the Secretary of Interior, Deb Howland. When you control the people's land, you control the people. For far too long, the indigenous people of Guam have been subjected to the condemnation of our ancestors' lands by the U.S. federal government, in which continues to today. It continues without remorse for our ancestors' burial sites that are being desecrated for war games. The people that left, our people, they left landless, dependent on a system in which does not promote true independence. Many were not afforded the opportunities because of our social welfare. All we have is our land. Now, many of us on our island depend on, depend a lot on federal assistance programs. Taimanu and no, land is life. When you control a people's natural resources within its 200-mile exclusive economic zone, you control the people. Think about it. An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. If the people were important, things within the continental United States would not be so. In Flint, Michigan, thousands of people are suffering because of their contaminated water source, and what is being done to correct this injustice? Unless we address this matter for the people who call Guam home, regardless of our political colonial status, we will be the next Flint with nowhere else to go, because we only have one sole source freshwater aquifer in which our life depends on. Yeah, you guessed it. It is the one that the military deliberately disregards. I came, I came across a video from the 2002 United Nations Climate Change Conference, or Conference of the Parties of the UN FCCC, and I would like to share words from the Prime Minister of Barbados, Mia Motley, as addressed in her speech in the COP27 held in Egypt. "We have the capacity to choose different. I ask the people of the world, and not just the leaders, therefore, to hold us accountable and to ask us to act in your name, to save this earth and to save the people of this earth. The choice is ours. What will you do? What will you choose to save? When you control the people's water, you control the people. On Guam, for far too long, we have been fighting for our basic human inalienable rights. To the elected officials, put fah boh. The actions we take today are more important than yesterday. This is our one and only life. We don't want the children to have to deal with this. Our ancestors have been dealing with the same injustice in the past. When will we learn? Do we not consider what we will leave our future generations? Without water, we have no life. What will you protect? Senator Maasi, honorable senators who are in attendance here today, I pray that Deb Howland is honorable. The people of Guam are some of the most honorable spirits in this world. We come from the most honorable indigenous people in this world. Please treat us as such."
Senator Maasi, Angela, for your testimony. Next on the list is Yanina Tanaka.
Hafadee, Madam Speaker, Chairwoman, and Senators. My name is Yanina Tanaka. I live in Mongwong Totumaiti. I'm 15 years old, and I am a proud Temoru. As a Temoru, Lataxen is an important and culturally significant land for not only me, but my people. Lataxen is home to significant ancient Temoru history and is open to the general public as of now. By destroying the sacred land and closing it off, we are removing our right as Temoru people to have access to our history and walk where our ancestors once walked. You are stripping future generations of their experiences. You are taking away their chance to learn about their ancestors and see for themselves how they lived and their hard work. Lataxen is not just a place in the jungle, it is a symbol of Temoru history. But sure, you might not all care about the cultural aspects, so I take it from a scientific perspective. As we know, Lataxen is home to the, to the northern Guam lens aquifer. The environmental impact that the construction of, of another firing range would cause on not only our source, our only source of fresh drinking water, but also the surrounding areas of jungle will be detrimental to the future of Lataxen and our water. These actions are permanent. The construction and the further use of the various weapons and chemicals protected to be used on the side of Lataxen are, as we know, all harmful to humans. And as we let those chemicals travel with rainwater and soak into the earth, they will eventually end up in our waterlands due to the nature of the limestone. This leaves harmful chemicals in our drinking water. We are putting so many people at risk by merely drinking water that is supposed to be clean. I might only be 15, but I know that I want my generation and the future generations of the Temoru people to be happy and healthy, healthy, and be able to visit their ancestors and their place of origin. The atrocities already committed to the, to our island of Guam are virtually irreversible. Do not let more harm be done to our island. Do not let us, do not let us see the demolishment of our home. I was around 10 when I first spoke here about the protection of Lataxen. I'm now 15. This fight has been ongoing for far more than those five years, but change needs to happen, and I want to be able to live to see it. By the time I am a biha, I would hope that I can say that I fought for the protection of our land and my culture and my protection, and say that we won. So Patah Lataxen. Along with my testimony, I will, I'm privileged and honored to be reading for Dr. Deborah Dear Madam Speaker, Chairwoman, and Senators, I'm writing in support of the indigenous people of Guam and their inalienable rights to protect their lands and waters of their ancestral home, Guam. I support Resolution 464-36 LS, which calls for protective measures to be addressed before further desecration of Guam is advanced. I believe that the protection of Guam's land and waters should be guaranteed as demonstrated by this government stance in embracing this sustainable developmental goals as set forth by the United Nations. In 2019, Governor Lillian Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenoria signed and adopted the Guam Green Growth Action Framework in line with the 17 United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. The Guam Green Growth III Steering Committee was established by Executive Order 2019-23, and the G3 Action Framework was developed by the G3 Working Group, which includes 97 members representing government agencies, academia, nonprofits, businesses, and youth.
which includes 97 members representing government agencies, academia, nonprofits, businesses, and youth. These actions demonstrate their worthy commitment to the SDGs. Goal 15 reads, "Protect, Restore, and Promote Sustainable Use of Tourrestrial Ecosystems, Sustainably Managed Forests, Combat Desertification, and Halt and Reverse Land Degradation and Halt Biodiversity Loss." Hence, it should be the stance of all government leaders and community members to support Resolution 464-36 LS. While the SDGs and the action by this government are worthy efforts in addressing the environmental and human rights issues on our island and planet without a shift in our values and attitudes, these goals are moot. It is important to note that people understood that a shift in our thinking and values was necessary to achieve the SDGs. Hence, the United Nations brought together representatives from hundreds of community members around the globe to create a collaborative document which would reflect the concerns and values of communities around the world. This resulted in the creation of the Earth Charter, which was formally introduced in 2000 as a way of forward in addressing the environmental, social, political, and economic issues evident in the world noted in the SDGs. The Earth Charter is comprised of four pillars under which 16 principles are noted to address the many layers of the SDGs. The following Earth Charter principles specifically address the need to support Resolution 464-36 LS. Under Pillar 2, Ecological Integrity. Principle 5, Protect and Restore the Integrity of Earth's Ecological Systems with special concern for biological diversity and natural processes that sustain life. A, Adopt at All Levels Sustainable Developmental Plans and Regulations That Make Environmental Conservation and Rehabilitation Integral to All Developmental Initiatives. B, Establish and Safeguard Viable Nature and Biosphere Reserves, including Wildlands and Marine Areas. To protect Earth's Life Support Systems, Maintain Biodiversity, and Preserve Our Natural Heritage. Principle 6, Prevent Harm as the Best Method of Environmental Protection, and When Knowledge Is Illimited, Apply a Precautionary Approach. Take Action to Avoid the Possibility of Serious or Irreversible Environmental Harm, Even When Scientific Knowledge Is Incomplete or Inconclusive. B, Place the Burden of Proof on Those Who Argue That a Proposed Activity Will Not Cause Significant Harm and Make the Responsible Parties liable for Environmental Harm. C, Ensure that Decision-Making Addresses the Cumulative, Long-Term, Indirect, Long Distance, and Global Consequences of Human Activities. D, Prevent Pollution of Any Part of the Environment and Allow No Build-Up of Radioactive, Toxic, or Other Hazardous Substances. E, Avoid Military Activities Damaging the Environment. Furthermore, Principle 12 calls for the protection of the indigenous rights to their spirituality, knowledge, lands, and resources to their related practice of sustainable livelihoods, as well as to protect and restore outstanding places of cultural and spiritual significance. If Guahan is committed to these SDGs, then our leaders and community members must also demonstrate commitment to the values and principles which are the very foundation of the SDGs. We must realize that in our every deliberation, we must consider the impact of our decisions on the next seven generations. Respectfully, Dr. Deborah Ellen.
Signe ma asi. So I guess I'll open the floor to my colleagues for any questions for this panel. Senator Rigel, if you have any questions. Senator Tid agree. Okay, thank you so much, and we'll recess for a brief moment to allow the next group to come to the table. Signe ma asi. Okay, we're back for recess. So now I'd like to call on Haani Lesam for her testimony.
Hafaday Senator Perez, Senator Rigel, and Senator Tid agree. Si dos ma asi for taking the time to listen today. My name is Haani Lesam. I'm a youth organizer with Protect Guam Water, an indigenous youth organization. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36 LS. We are here today in defense of our ocean and coastline. A massive firing range complex is being constructed over the northern Guam lens aquifer. Eighty-five percent of businesses, schools, and families, both on base and off, drink this water, brush their teeth with it, bathe their children in it, and use it to cook and to feed their families. It is the only aquifer that we have and is arguably our most important resource. While your day has probably been long, we are asking you to listen, to take notes, to stay awake. We are asking you to pay attention to the data that we are going to share with you today. Data that was omitted from the environmental impact statement that was produced by the Navy and required by national law. Data that tells us that if we don't take action now, that our groundwater, coastline, and community are in danger. As indigenous Temorus, we believe that the land and the ocean are quite literally our ancestors and that we are obligated to take care of them in the same way that we would care for our own grandparents. We ask that you consider this obligation to future generations. But even if you don't embrace this belief, we hope that you acknowledge that it is irresponsible to allow lead and chemical contamination of our coastline and even a corner of our precious aquifer. Today, we are asking you to protect this water source and our beautiful coastline for our community and for future generations. Water is life, and we call on you to protect it.
Signe ma asi, Haani. The next person on the list is Tatiana Ananich.
Hafaday Senator Perez and Senator Rigel, my name is Tatiana Ananich. I'm a youth organizer with Protect Guam Water. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36. We are here today in defense of our primary source of water, the northern Guam lens aquifer. The northern Guam lens aquifer is designated as Guam's sole source aquifer. It provides eighty-five percent of fresh water for local and military families as well as visitors. The aquifer is composed of six sub-basins. The live-fire training range complex is being constructed on top of the Finagaden and Agafagume sub-basins. For reference, the firing range complex is adjacent to Lataxen or Vatidian, a beautiful coastline rich with our history and heritage. The standalone hand grenade range in Anderson South sits on top of the Jigo Tumon sub-basin. According to the Record of Decision on Page 7, the firing range complex, not even including the hand grenade range, takes up over 4,000 acres of land, which is equivalent to a village larger than Aganya Heights, Sinahanya, and MTM combined. The firing range complex consists of five ranges, including a rifle range, a pistol range, a non-standard small arms range, an MRF range, and a multi-purpose machine gun or MPMG range. The range construction footprint, according to the Record of Decision, is approximately 338 acres, or the size of 260 football fields, and has been entirely cleared of plants, trees, and all vegetation which serves as a natural filtration system for the aquifer. According to the final SEIS, over 6.7 million rounds of munitions will be fired every year at the training range complex. Munitions constituents, as defined in 10 U.S.C. Section 2710 E3, means any materials originating from unexploded ordnance, discarded military munitions, or other military munitions, including explosive and non-explosive materials, and emission, degradation, or breakdown elements of such ordnance or munitions. The EIS does not disclose all of the munitions constituents. However, it does acknowledge that lead ammunition will be used. As you know, lead exposure can be dangerous even at low levels. Young children are especially at risk. Lead exposure can cause developmental delays, neurological changes, and at high levels can be fatal. Other chemicals like HMX are harmful to the liver and central nervous system. Some of the chemicals left in soils are carcinogenic or cancer-causing. Munition constituents from training range activities are concerning because of their danger to human health and the environment. Given the porous nature of limestone beneath the firing range complex and the ability of rain and surface water runoff to filter rapidly through limestone to the groundwater lens beneath, there is legitimate cause for concern of water contamination. Water is life, and we call upon you to protect it. Si dos ma asi.
Si dos ma asi, Tatiana, for your testimony. Now I'd like to call upon Isabella Olalia.
Buonasima Senator Perez, Senator Rigel, and Senator Tid agree. Guausi Isabella Olalia. I'm a youth organizer with Protect Guam Water. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36. We are here today in defense of the health of our community, Temoru, Chukis, Yapis, Palauan, Ponapean, Marshallis, Filipino, white, or black, the families who live on base and families who do not. Fact, lead and other toxic chemicals are found in soil surrounding firing ranges. A 2012 EPA issue paper, Site Characterization for Munition Constituents, looked at 30 military installations and firing ranges across the United States and Hawaii and found lead and other toxic chemicals left in soils and surrounding areas. Quoting Jim Keeney, former director of Environmental Science Associates, who reviewed this study, he said of the study, "The results show that there is a wide range of chemicals that are left in soil, many of which can be mobilized by rain and travel to groundwater. This is of particular concern because of the karst limestone geology of the islands is relatively porous," end quote. There are limited discussions of all the munition constituents to be used at the firing ranges. However, the draft SEIS on Page 5-83 discloses that lead ammunition would be used and that lead, along with other heavy metals such as nickel, chromium, cadmium, and copper, tend to accumulate in soils at training ranges but are not very soluble. On Page 5-89, the final SEIS acknowledges that MCs or munition constituents, particularly heavy metals, including lead, tend to accumulate in surface soils and do not break down in the manner of organic compounds. An example of contamination can be found in Oahu, where lead levels were 70 times higher than accepted residential levels. They were found on a beach adjacent to the Pualoa Training Range Facility. It is too late for them, but it is not too late for us. The contamination of our coastline and primary source of water can still be prevented. Water is life. We need it to live, to thrive. It courses through the pipes of this building. It runs through our schools and our businesses. It is consumed by our people, our visitors. It is in the blood that courses through all of our veins. If our water is contaminated, we will be the ones to suffer its poison. Is a firing range complex worth more than the security of our water, of us? We are here, asking all of you, our elected representatives, to protect our water, for your loved ones, for my loved ones, and for future generations. Signe ma asi.
Signe ma asi. Next, we have Shabon McManus.
Hafaday. Hafaday Senators, si dos ma asi for taking the time to listen today. It's been a long day. My name is Shabon, and I'm an organizer with Protect Guam Water. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36. Today, we're here in defense of the most vulnerable to lead exposure, young children and babies of all types of families. What we've already established just now is that toxic chemicals, including lead, are left behind in soil surrounding firing ranges. But how does that soil affect what we're here to talk about today, which is our aquifer? Fact, these chemicals can travel via surface or groundwater and contaminate groundwater along with coastal and marine resources. Jim Keeney, former director of Environmental Science Associates, referencing the 2012 US EPA study, says this, "There is a wide range of chemicals that are left in the soil, many of which can be mobilized by rain and travel to groundwater." Mobilized by rain and travel to groundwater. Toxic chemicals in the soil may travel by rainwater through existing sinkholes or depressions containing sinkholes within the range locations. So the final SEIS on Page 5-321 and Figure 5.511 identifies seven total sinkholes or depressions that may contain sinkholes within or on the perimeter of the firing range complex. The final SEIS on Page 4-12 says that recharge of the freshwater lens can occur by rain falling on the surface of the island or through sinkholes or dissolution caverns which would provide a direct path for surface water to reach the groundwater table. This is a fact. In Appendix G, Responses to Public and Agency Comments on the Draft SEIS, Part 3 of 3, on Page 603, the Department of Interior Comments on the Lead Contamination of Water Supplies and the Potential for Lead Poisoning in Wildlife on the Vatidian Unit, due to the lead components in the bullets, the DOI stated, "We are concerned this will create a lead poisoning hazard for wildlife." These are the DOI's own words. The US EPA in its Draft SEIS Comments on the LFTRC also recognized the potential for contamination of the aquifer. So the lack of data surrounding the potential for toxic chemicals to leach into our aquifer, as they have already at other ranges on US military installations, it is more than concerning. It is a reality we have to contend with. The brief discussion in the SEIS on groundwater flow and the REVA program, which was supposed to address these concerns, does not address data concerning the risk for soil and water contamination from munition constituents such as lead, TNT, HMX, RDX, or perchlorate making their way to the aquifer, our only aquifer, via rainfall, surface runoff, sinkholes, or other pathways. Studies like the US EPA paper call into question the Navy's supposed conclusion that there will be no significant direct or indirect impacts to our aquifer. We cannot afford, as a people, to move on without more data. The facts are clear. The risk is imminent. It is not to be debated. The facts are there. So what then is the cost that we're debating today? What is the cost then of 170,000 lives? What is the cost of 4,000 years of history? Because we are not strangers to climate refugees here in Micronesia. We are not so far removed from the horrors of a post-World War II, post-atomic region to know what it's like for islands around us to become uninhabitable due to military activities. So what is the cost? And are you as our leaders, or are us people, prepared to bear the weight of it? Water is life, and there is no future Guahan without clean water. No matter your class, or your status, or your politics, or your day job, or your family background... background, whether you live inside or outside the bases, whether you have been to protests since you were little, or whether you're new to this community, whether you believe you will be impacted by this development or not, whether you're indigenous to Guahan's land and waters, or you're a beloved guest in our home, we do not have a community without clean water. We do not have an economy without clean water. We do not have geopolitical safety without clean water. There is no pillar of local or federal government, no corner of our village, no social safety net, no level of civil society that exists without clean water. The question of water precludes every other social and infrastructural issue that could possibly be addressed in a building like this, in the legislature. So it is disappointing then, when our leaders do not show up for the thing that is keeping them and us breathing. So we're thankful for those who did show up, because you three, in many ways, are all we have, sometimes. Water is the basis of our very lives. The facts today have shown the risk is imminent. We are calling on you to protect us by protecting our water. Thank you. Sisus Maasi.
The next person is Haani Sanchez. You're recognized.
Hafadee Senators, Inan Husi Haani Sanchez. I am a youth organizer with Protect Guam Water. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36 LS. Today, we are here in defense of consent and truth. Fact: The Navy omitted relevant data. National law requires the Navy to reduce an environmental impact statement, or EIS, in this document. The Navy omitted relevant data, like the EPA paper, did not identify all chemicals or end propellants to be used at the ranges, did not account for changes or impacts to groundwater flow from future water well pumping and installations, resource demands, and climate change, provided no plans for mitigations if either the aquifer or coastline, or both, are contaminated. There is no discussion in the EIS documents regarding potential for munitions constituents to travel via surface or groundwater, or impacts on coastal marine resources. Given the importance of the aquifer and our reliance on it as our main source of drinking water, it is critical that we are provided accurate information. Any potential for toxic chemicals to reach water resources is addressed through the Periodic Range Environmental Vulnerability Assessment, REVA, and the Operational Range Clearance Programs and Best Management Practices. Page 5-327 of the final SEIS notes that the REVA assessments will not incur until a minimum of one year after the range operations begin. In other words, we wait and see if contamination occurs. This wait-and-see approach puts our primary source of water and beautiful coastline at risk and ignores available data. We do not consent to lead contamination of our coastline, or even the outskirts of the aquifer. Ekungo. Linatla ihanum. Protehi ihanum. Listen. Water is life. We call on you to protect it. Thank you.
Sinamasi, Haani. Next on our list is Kiana Tuncap.
Hafadee Senators, Sisus Maasi for taking the time to listen today. My name is Kiana Tuncap, and I'm an organizer with Protect Guam Water. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36. Today, we are here in defense of the heritage and health of future generations. One could argue that no one knew the consequences when the Coast Guard improperly discarded transformers, capacitators, and other equipment on Coco's Island and in Coco's Lagoon. Did they know that almost 70 years later, we still can't catch fish in that area? That even today contaminants like DDT and PCBs would still be present at the concerning levels in both the fish and in nearshore waters? Did they know that it would increase rates of cancer in a whole village dependent on fishing to feed their families, and that people would suffer, get sick, and possibly die? Did they care? If those in power at the time had known the consequences, would they have fought to prevent it from happening? Today, we have data from a national agency that shows the lead and other toxic chemicals are left behind in soil surrounding firing ranges and can travel to groundwater and coastlines. We know that lead doesn't disintegrate, and that several generations from now, our great-grandchildren will live with the decisions we make today. Years from now, if lead is found circulating in the aquifer, if toxic chemicals are discovered contaminating the coastline, we won't be able to say that we didn't know. We will only be able to say that we did not act. An aquifer is not a thing to gamble with. It is our obligation to pass this island on to future generations in better shape than we found it. To allow lead contamination of an entire coastline for future generations is hugely irresponsible. Today, we ask you to join us in calling on national leaders to protect our most vital resources by supporting Resolution 464-36. Water is life, and we call on you to protect it. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Kiana. Silencia Saladier. I don't know if I pronounced that right. If you could say that.
Hafadee. Senator Rogel, Senator Perez, and Senator Taidegui. Sisus Maasi, and thank you for being here and for taking the time to listen. My name is Silencia Saladier, and I'm a youth organizer with Protect Guam Water. I submit this testimony in support of Resolution Number 464-36. Today, we are here in defense of our island, ihanum zanitanu. All across our region, island nations are conserving and protecting resources to ensure the survival of our communities through climate change. We implore you to have the courage to join them. Protect Guam Water launched a petition in September of 2021 in defense of our aquifer and coastline. The petition calls on the United States Senate Committee on Armed Services to stop construction of the firing range complex, to require an assessment of the environmental risk of the same, including both the impending threat of contamination of the aquifer and the future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam, and to withhold all current and future funding of the firing range complex, or any associated federal action, until strict compliance with this demand is met. The petition also calls on the United States Secretary of Interior, Deb Haaland, to honor the Department of Interior's trust responsibilities and special commitments to Guam, in particular to the native Chamorro people, and to advocate for the protection of the aquifer by directing the Bureau of Land Management to conduct additional environmental and other assessments concerning the firing range complex. Today, there are 7,787 signatures on this petition, and it is steadily rising. There is no amount of money that should be able to buy the right of future generations to a clean environment. It isn't radical to act to prevent lead contamination of our ocean, coastline, or primary source of water. Today, we ask you to join us in calling on national leaders to protect our most vital resource by supporting Resolution 464-36. Water is life. We call on you to protect it. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Silencia. Next on the list is Cara Mays.
Hafadee Senators, Rogel, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Taidegui. Thank you so much for coming again to another, I think the first time that you heard our youth was at a roundtable. I do want to acknowledge that Senator Nelson and Senator Tina Munya, or Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, were also at that roundtable, and we appreciate that. It has been very difficult for the youth to get an appointment with any of the other senators, and I'm very disappointed that they are not here today for such an important matter. I won't repeat any of the data that has been shared here. I just wanted to express how proud I am of everyone at this table, and those who decided not to speak today and instead supported. We will continue to try to make appointments with the other senators who have not taken an appointment yet to give the same presentation that the youth gave here today, in spite of their and our limited time and resources. This is a really important matter, and we hope that they will make time for the youth to share this research, which has taken, as you can imagine, a lot of time to review and put together. Thank you so much for being here today.
Sinamasi to all of Protect Guam Water for your advocacy and your courage to be here today to fight for our water. Sisus Maasi. I'd like to open, actually, to my colleagues for any questions, if they have any questions to the panel. Senator Rogel, and Senator Taidegui.
I just want to personally thank you so much for being here, and I know this group has been together for how long now? How many? When did this group formulate? It's about a year ago? Two years ago? Okay. Well, it seems to be growing, and that's a good sign. So thank you so much for stepping up to the plate and protecting our island, or being a voice to do that, just that. Just appreciate it. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, and yes, you have our commitment to continue this work, and we look forward to working with you to make sure. Okay, so we can have a quick recess for the next panel? So there's Xena Ruiz, Christian Siniklis, Caitlin, my apologies, I can't pronounce your last name, Callan Perez, and the next person looks like Bee, I'm not sure if that's the right, oh, Bill, Bill Cunliffe is on the list, if you'd like to testify. Henry Maglotnia, Francisco Beneventi, Dakota Camacho, and Eileen Menno. Feel free to come up to the table if you would like to testify. Okay. All right, so we're back from recess. You may proceed.
Hafadee Manastauna Senadora, Senadora, Gua Husi Xena Siniklis Ruiz, who represents Zanai Inetnan Iman Fafatnogui Bailem Zamoro. My name is Xena Siniklis Ruiz, and I'm here on behalf of Iman Fafatnogui Bailem Zamoro. Dear Senator Clint Rajal and members of the committee, Senora Sabina and Senora Telo, we are hafadee. We are Inetnan Iman Fafatnogui Bailem Zamoro, a tribal council whose members are committed to the revitalization, appreciation, and perpetuation of indigenous Chamorro art and culture. We are certified Fafatnogui by Master Francisco B. Rabon in 2010, and we were recognized as a tribal council by Iman 32 Narehas Laturen Guahan in July of 2014. In our endeavors to preserve the Chamorro language and culture, we recognize that this initiative to protect and preserve Guam's northern aquifer, Guam's coastline, and our accessibility to natural water essential. We support Iman Ho Ben Sihah of Protect Guam Water and everyone here in support, as they become stewards of our land and our natural resources. As taught to us by our elders, tisinya mama hanum hit. We cannot make water. Please support this effort. It affects all of us. And this Inetnan consists of Eileen Menno, master, Guma Erangchen Tautautano Guam, Rosalyn Akinino, Guma Erangchen Tautautano Guam, Dana Cruz Kim, Guma Tautautanu Guam, Barbara Tanatongo Bigler, Guma Anitin I Tautautano Guam, Brian Jess Trilahi, Guma Rasen Otulati Guam, Jonathan Perez, Guma Inina Nisainata Guam, Maxine Bigler Tanatongo, Guma Kinalamtin I Tautautano Guam, Raymond Luhan, Guma Nina In Otulati Guam, Eric Rages, Guma Tautautaga Tinian Northern Mariana Islands, Jonas Barsinas, Guma Inatuas Saipan Northern Mariana Islands, Rosemary Mantenonya, Guma Imahen Tautautano US, Heidi Kenga, Guma Kutturan Chamorro Foundation US, Arthur Pangalinen, Guma Tautautano Guam, and myself, Xena Ruiz, Guma Tautautano Guinigiza Guam. We submit this in support of this initiative. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi for representing the cultural groups, and thank you for being here. Now I'd like to call Christian Siniklis.
Hafadee, my name is Christian Siniklis. I'm here representing MCCA, the Micronesia Climate Change Alliance. I apologize, I did not have anything pre-written, but thank you so much for my friend, for telling me to speak, because, you know, there's reasons why we're here, and honestly, I am happy to give my voice. I've been doing a lot of thinking about, like, you know, the future of Guam, and I've been, you know, really emotional of like where our island is heading. I just finished like a month-long, you know, stateside tour, being in alliance with national and global members from all over the world working for climate justice. And hypermilitarization is a big issue. And, you know, I'm really afraid of, you know, the future of Guam, you know, being from an isolated part in the world. I'm not too sure what we're even gonna, you know, in the event that our northern aquifer lens is affected to any type of degree where it's undrinkable, like, what is our plan B? What is our plan C in getting water to drink? You know, are we looking at importing water? And, you know, I really don't trust America in ensuring that, you know, that the data they're giving is accurate, as we've heard that there's a lot of things that have been omitted to our community, so that's something that we all need to take into consideration. But I also don't trust America in executing their plan B and C. If we look at the states, they have communities that do not have drink, clean drinking water for months on end, even till this day. They have Flint, Michigan, and even parts of Mississippi, where individuals have to line up for long hours just for their water. So if they can't even support themselves and their fellow United States of America in ensuring that their constituents have enough drinking water for their community, I don't think I would trust them to have enough drinking water for us. So we support this bill, Bill 464-36. Thank you so much for listening, and Protect Guam Water. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite Caitlin for her testimony.
Hafadee Ali Ali, my name is Caitlin. I'm a Chamorro Palauan Chamali, daughter of Guahan and mother of four children. I actually started getting involved in activism here with the decolonization movement when I was a mother of two, and I am a mother of four, and it can be very exhausting. I would love to move to Palau. I had the opportunity to. My cousin there has two houses, and he offered me a place to stay, but I'm stuck here because I have a joint custody issue with my kids' fathers. And just seeing all the oppression here, and how, you know, even though there's so many good people here, all of you that are trying so hard to fight for what's right and to protect our resources and make this place better, get rid of the poverty and drug situation here, it just continues to be really bad, and it's because of the colonization here. And it really hurts because I see how beautiful Palau is when I go there. You see fruit bats, you see burrs, the water's so clear. You see fruit bats, we see birds, the water's so clean, there's clams, it's so nice, and I wish my children could grow up with that, but you don't even hear the birds here. There's so much being lost here, it's so sad. It's so sad. It's really, 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 really sad. I don't need to write anything, it's just really sad. You heard me think, I wish there were more people here to support, I wish Guam could be decolonized already. I'm so tired of doing protests. We vote, we think it's gonna change, but then it just, it's, you know, the oppression, the poverty, the rape, the abuse of the land, and the abuse of the people, it goes hand in hand. There was, actually, I'm an ecofeminist, and ecofeminism stems from a study done worldwide that showed that in places where there was a high amount of abuse on the land, there was a high amount of abuse on the people, and in places where there wasn't so much abuse on people, women and children, there wasn't so much abuse on the land. It goes hand in hand, and you will see that reflected everywhere, just like Palau, for example. There's a low amount of rape and abuse there and a low amount of abuse on the land, whereas here, we have the second highest rate of rape and abuse in America, per capita in America, and we are one of, according to Dr. Hope Cristobal, we are one of the most toxic places per capita in all of America due to the military's contamination sites. I'm so tired of this, I just want my kids to grow up in a safe place. I am a repeat survivor of rape and abuse, and I, I, I see how the land, Mother Earth, our land and our water also is a repeat survivor of rape and abuse. That video we watched was so traumatizing, that was rape. Our island is being raped. The people that are doing this to our island, they are terrorists, they are rapists. That is disrespect to us and our, our children who inherit all of this. I wish Guam could be more like Palau, but even Palau, they're building a military site there now, and, you know, the government's trying to find it, but military is like a cancer, it's really taking over so much, even places that's independent, or thought was independent. And it, there is hope, though, because in the beginning, when we started off with, or when I started off in the activism circle, there were a lot of people that hated us. I would see, like, on the news, like, on the Facebook, KOM page, they would, like, "Oh, you're anti-military." Like, "My brother's in the military, I love my family, loved ones that are in the military," but what the military is doing to our island is bad. It's terrorism, it's bad, it's hurting us, it's hurting our natural resources. And I have respect for all my loved ones that are in the military, but obviously, what's happening is bad, and it's wrong, and there should be more support from more senators, more people on our island. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that has been involved, because Protect Guam Water and all the youth that have been speaking up and just doing so much work through social media, it's made a big impact, and there's been a huge change. I see people that before used to, like, hate on us and to say we're anti-military now have a change of heart because they see the facts, they see all of the people that, you know, are now speaking up, and that is very hopeful, that's why I'm very grateful for that, and I hope people continue to do that. In Palau, we have activists whose houses were firebombed, firebomb, elder women, they would, I think, I know Senator Sabina knows who I'm talking about, and, like, they risked their lives, they risked their lives, and, and they were threatened, doing exactly what we're doing here. And one of their activists, who was an old, 77-year-old woman, ended up getting a Nobel Peace Prize, it's like Dr. Hope Cristobal, and she ended up stopping nuclear weapons from being held there. So there's hope, there's hope for Guam, and I just want to say thank you so much because this is exhausting. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I love our water, I love our island, and I love everyone that also loves our water and island. So, that's it. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you so much for your being here and continuing to express, you know, the heartache that our community is facing, and just sharing, you know, how beautiful Palau is, right? Something that we can aspire to, so thank you. Next on the list is Callan, she's here? Okay, the next one is Bill Cunliffe.
My name's Bill Cunliffe, and I support Resolution 464-36. When I was in the Air Force, I was a superintendent of a civil engineering squadron that run this program. And there will never be a time that we will not inspect, check the environment, check the control, I mean, the emotions of the people. We check everything before we dig for anything. So that's what we do. The Air Force has been a good neighbor out there. We're not glowing here today. We've been drinking water forever, and we're not glowing. Obviously, there could be some more improvements, but overall, we're doing okay. So, but it is important that we ask the data upfront, so we can have the minds get together and study the data to ensure that it's accurate and we can get and go forward from there. But this is a good bill, to analyze the data, to get all the information upfront, and then we can go from there. Thank you very much.
Sidoos Masi, Bill. Next we have Henry Meglotnia, if you'd like to testify, Francisco Beneventi, Dakota Camacho.
Hafadeh, inahun si Dakota Camacho, and I, I support this resolution, and I want to offer these words today in the spirit of prayer, in the spirit of, a prayer for the collective transformation of human consciousness on this planet. I think about one of the wise things about Chamoros, before the Spanish came, if there ever was warfare, it ended the moment that somebody died. If there ever was warfare, it ended the moment a person died. I think that that's the kind of message that everybody on this planet needs to hear right now, that any human life lost for the sake of a disagreement or conflict is one too many, any human life. This bill is important, not only because it protects our aquifer and our people and our water, because it is a part of a global movement to end the militarization of the planet, to end the desecration of all life anywhere. And I know that you three are in support of this work, and I also know that there's a lot of gunk that gets in the way of people's hearts and people's minds, to be able to see clearly that we've just gone too far, and we need to slow way down and build a new way to live life on this planet. So I want to offer this prayer today because, in the words of my friend Davida Ingram, prayer works. I want to offer this prayer for you all, that you may be given the divine guidance, the divine support, in order to continue to push forward despite the opposition that's coming towards you. For all of the senators, for all of our government officials, whose job it is to protect us, may they also be guided by Asayna Hidza Hululu, sidoos, to do what's right on behalf of life So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sing this song here as a part of my testimony. I'm gonna offer this prayer, and I'm gonna invite those who are able to stand with me. Anga gangao haunui sina guemu. Sen magasi lenget zanitannu. Na fanma ina hamnui mina lo mu. Zan na tsuha itinai la jingzami. Na fanma otihamnui mina olekmu. Zan noihamnui minengu. Iminen halom zanini na tisinya. Nahin afunho zanite tu mo mi po gu.
So I want to thank my colleague Senator Clint Rajal for this resolution, and I especially want to thank all those, all those that came here today, Protect Hila Texan, Protect Guam Water, inetnan iman manfa fatna guen bylen chamoro, and all of you that have come here today to give your testimony, because it's through you that our island can regain its resilience in our quest for environmental justice and the protection of our water and our lands. As we know, resolutions are, in a sense, an expression of the will of the people and ilas latura, and I feel the significance of this particular resolution cannot be understated. Resolution 464-36 is a call by the Chamorro people and everyone who calls Guam home to protect our most precious resource, the aquifer, our water, which we rely upon our nourishment, our health, our livelihood. Water is our basic need and a human right. Clean and accessible drinking water is essential to life, yet for many communities around the world, clean water is scarce and inaccessible. Here at home, we are blessed with abundance of clean water because our northern Guam lens aquifer, which supplies over 90% of our people with water, but it is fragile and delicately maintained by the protection of our limestone and ravine forests and other habitats. Yet time and again, we are forced to compromise the health and the sustainability of our primary water source, our native forests, our people, for the Department of Defense with the construction of the new Marine Corps Base, the live-fire training range complex, and open burn, open detonation of munitions in proximity to our most populous villages. So above all, this resolution is a call for solidarity between the people of Guam, who for decades have called for an end to environmental injustice, for human rights and the rights of the Chamorro people, to free prior and informed consent, and our allies in Washington, DC, to put a pause on the environmental damage taking place along our northern plateau. And I'm very humbled and honored to join all of you here today in support of this resolution. Sidoos Masi. So I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Taidegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for the panel. My friend Xena, thank you for being here and representing the culture. It's, it's great to see that it's not just in the environment, but all around, you know, our island is one and one people. And Mr. Cunliffe, I was greatly anticipating your testimony. I know you're a man who's been looking at some of the, the poisons that have been on this island and to get some justify, not just justification, but relief for those who've been infected by Agent Orange, as well as some of the other contaminants that were left here by the military. And I really appreciate you being here today. Thank you so much, it meant a lot. And to everybody here, beautifully sung over there, you, it was just a beautiful prayer and done in song, you have a wonderful, wonderful voice, so I appreciate for that. So thank you, and everybody else who's here today. Continue the fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Senator Rajal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have much to say. I think everything that's needed to be said so far has been pretty much said during this hearing, so I just really want to thank all of you for coming out today and providing your very, very valuable testimony. You guys came well-prepared, not only with actual facts based off of the, the DOD's own studies through their environmental impact statement, supplemental environmental impact statement, et cetera, but also you brought, in addition to those facts, your own personal stories, and you brought with you your hearts, your feelings, and your spirit, so thank you all. For me, this resolution is, to sum it up, there's a lot of big words in it, you know, fancy chemicals that I can barely pronounce the name of, but to me, it all boils down to one very simple thing, and that is, we want to protect our water, because that's all we have. If we don't have water, like so many of you said, we don't have life. Water is life, and we can't make it, so we gotta protect it. And when we protect it, we gotta think not only about ourselves, but our future generations that will need this water. So that's why this resolution is important to me, that we send a strong statement to the US federal government, that we want to ensure that our drinking water is clean and safe forever. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Rajal. Just to reiterate, the committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Wednesday, November 23, 2022. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off at the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. If there are no further testimonies or questions, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning will now adjourn this hearing. The time is now 4:58 PM. Sidoos Masi.